I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education regular meeting on November 15th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the Performing Arts Center. This is a meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education. It's a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please silence your cell phones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Anishinaabe people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Anishinaabe people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation. In a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial, and whose land and which we said in our tripwire Indian tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on it for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is roll call.
Sheila Murphy?
Here.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yeah.
Courtney Stegman?
Here.
Dana Cawkins?
Kim Odakir?
Here.
Amy Bond?
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to add or has anything to say about it? Not seeing any. Our Student Board of Education rep is not here tonight, I believe. So that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Let me just pull up a couple of documents here that we'll be going through for my report. The first item that I have is a couple of different student enrollment worksheets. Typically, the first meeting in November, we always review our student enrollment. As you know, the state of Michigan takes enrollment count twice a year. Once is on the first Wednesday in October, and the second time is on the first Wednesday in February. So this PDF that you have in your board packet this evening breaks down for you our student population in our buildings. This is a combined chart of regular education students and special education students. And you can see across the bottom, an ongoing total of grade levels. And then at the very bottom, you can see our total enrollment. This information is written in decimal form. It is what we call FTE, Full Time Equivalent. So it does not actually equate to what schools like to say as butts in seats. So where this is 3,566.13 students, it actually could represent more students than that because they're a portion. The second chart shows you the fall count of Full Time Equivalents from 2008 all the way to the 2021 school year. So you can see where our enrollment is showing currently a slight increase over last year. Couple of things that we need to remember. First of all, our fall count for this fall is not yet audited. So it is very likely that those numbers will decrease. Right now, we are sort of in a back and forth with our pupil accounting auditors where they're asking for additional information on certain students. We're providing it, and we'll go back and forth with them probably for the next month or so before our fall count is finalized. When it's finalized, we say that it's certified at that point. The other part to remember is that last year, our count was a part of a super blend, and that was a one-year, I'm gonna call it an exception, that the state gave to us because of the pandemic, where they allowed us to blend two years' worth of enrollment to create our fall number. We receive our state funding based on these numbers. So fall count is based on 90% of the students that we have enrolled, the FTE that we have enrolled, and 10% of our February 2021 count. So that's how we're funded for the school year. We now move into a phase where we look at Section 25 students. And what that means is that if we have a student that comes into our district or leaves our district between now and the February count, their funding goes with them. So today's the first day of the second trimester. We may have had more students start today. If they were previously counted in another public school in Michigan, their funding will travel to Mount Pleasant Public Schools. If they previously attended a private school, there would not be any funding for them, but we would still take them if they are a Mount Pleasant Public School resident. Same thing would hold true if a student left our district today to attend another public school in the state of Michigan, their funding travels with them. If they leave our school today because they're moving to New York, we keep their funding. So the next few months, we'll sort of go back and forth, and then these numbers will be finalized once again for the spring count. So they call it spring even though it's February. Does anyone have any questions about our enrollments? It is definitely better than we anticipated. And I shared with you in an email that, you know, we thought our enrollment was down quite a bit, and as we were looking more closely at the formulas, this chart represents three different spreadsheets that funnel into one. And I make a very simple one just as a quick reference for myself, and that just happened to be when we caught the calculation error, so we were able to quickly fix that, which made a big difference for us, which is great.
What determines the partial of a student?
So it's based on the amount of FTE there in our classes, the amount of time that's thrown in our classes. So like, you know, we provide shared time services to Sacred Heart Academy. So you can see there, the second two rows, or I'm sorry, the bottom two rows before the total, portions of students. That's the amount of time of a school day that those students are working with a Mount Pleasant Public School educator. So we do all of their electives or specials, PE, music, art, Spanish, computers, those kinds of classes. So anything that our students have access to as far as an elective program goes, we're able to provide that at local private schools and receive state funding for it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I do just want to give a lot of thanks to Joe Judge and Elaine Ash, who have worked really hours and hours and hours on these numbers to get them for us, to get them ready to go for the auditor. So we're very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions about our enrollment? Just in case, Ginger, foundational allowance this year is $8,700 per student. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's up from $8,111 last year. So if there aren't any other questions, I will just keep going. Next up on the agenda under the superintendent's report is my COVID-19 update. And again, I'm just following the same format that I've done in other board meetings. If there's information that you'd like me to share differently, please let me know. So our active COVID cases, we are on an increase right now. These are cases that are active as of Friday. This represents 21 students active, five staff members active. And then you can see at the bottom, the number of students and staff members that are ending isolation this past weekend and were able to return to school today. I know one of the things we've talked about when we look at numbers also is the number of folks that are hospitalized in this group. We do have one student and one staff member that have been hospitalized. Neither of them are currently in the hospital, but through this process, they have been Our mask protocol, again, Isabella County continues to be in an area of high transmission, and our mask protocol means that all students and staff are required to wear masks at all times. Once we get out of high transmission, that's when we begin to look at the second factor there, which is the number of cases and the percentage of the building population. Some general information, we do continue to keep our COVID team very busy with phone calls, answering questions. We do have a public health intern from CMU. She's been very busy also reaching out to families, helping provide information. Currently, we do not have any classes that are all virtual. We're able to keep everyone in school. We did have to cancel one bus route this week. You probably noticed on the emails that I send, our transportation department had not been a part of any positive cases, and then all of a sudden, we had four cases within transportation within three weeks. It's a small group anyway. You know we're short on drivers anyway, and so to have to cancel one route, we avoided it as long as we could, but we did need to do that. So we were able to reach out to the families on that route on Friday. We asked them to get their students to school today, and anyone that wanted them received iRide passes for the rest of the week. So we've made sure that families know to contact us if something happens. They thought they didn't need iRide, but now they do, and we'll continue to work with them throughout the week. So that's not a great thing that's happened, but I think the way the process went has been a good process as far as the communication, getting everything out. We still have staff members that are getting the vaccine booster. We're also aware of students in our district now, ages five through 11, that are getting the vaccine. We are offering rapid tests for employees who need that. I've actually become rather busy in the past 10 days giving rapid tests to employees. I know that's probably not the best solution, but right now, there isn't anyone else that can do it, so I'm happy to do that. And we're really still very grateful for our family partnership and our partnership with our employees. Everyone knows to get the information to us. We're able to call folks over the weekend, catch up so that, you know, we really are being as safe as possible. So still trying to make the best out of a not great situation, but I feel like our team is really doing a good job. I feel like our building staff, especially our front office staff in our buildings, is really doing an excellent job of making sure that we have good communication all the way around. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Next, under my report are just two pieces of information that are in your board packet this evening. I'm not going to pull them up, but they're basically, first of all, the appointments that will happen at the January organizational meeting with a description of those responsibilities. We want to make sure that you all have the opportunity to read through those descriptions, ask any questions, and be better prepared for our January meeting. We also have included in there a board member norms statement, and I believe all of you have signed that previously, just sort of our working norms for one another, how we communicate, how we connect, and how we're able to move forward in a professional manner. So we will revisit both of those documents. We wanted to make sure that you had them, that you knew where to find them now, so that we can be prepared for our January meeting. Any questions about either of those documents? I do also have a tentative schedule of board meeting dates, and I'm just remembering that I didn't put that in here, so I will email that to you all tomorrow so that you can look at those dates, and that would be for the 2022 calendar year. Just trying to look ahead a little bit. Questions at all? The next item under my report is the PSC update, and I'll turn that over to Linda.
Good evening, everyone. At our last meeting, we invited Shane Brooks to join our administrative team and the whole PSC group. Shane is a data integration expert from the RESD, and one of the things he walked us through is kind of just reintroducing each other to myscholedata.org. Anyone can log in and look at this data. We do have login and passwords, but anyone can log in and look at the different levels of data that have just been released. Of course, there wasn't data in 2019, 2020, so it's kind of exciting to see how our students did on the M-Step tests after returning last year. So this is just one simple page of third grade math, and you can see my notes on the side, but the top two bars show our proficiency. So 51.6% of the inter-third graders were proficient in math. And then, you know, we always do the quick analysis to the state average and then to our Giresd counterparts. So that's just one very quick look at one grade level, and it kind of re-energized us all to dig into our data. I had mentioned earlier this year that, of course, we have the solid PSC cycle for curriculum review, but we really wanted to dig into our data to determine, you know, what should we really focus on. And so we've kind of decided to look really closely at our math and reading data to see if there are any holes and what type of materials or interventions we may want to continue to pursue in our classroom. So that's just a snapshot of that data dig. And then also on our PSC agenda, we continued our work with our social studies cycle. Marcy Stout is leading the K-5 cycle, and they spent some time this last month with half-day work sessions. They've got a great deal of the work done, and they are examining the diversity piece and using the recently released Anashabi manual to make sure that that is integrated. It's really nicely laid out, and it shows how the standards connect very nicely to Michigan history at various grade levels. Darby Weaver is leading the pacing project at the high school and at the middle school. They've added a column to their pacing guide to discuss what diversity areas are they already including, and they also wanted to make sure that they are using that Anashabi resource to see what is appropriate at the high school level. So that work is continuing. We've also talked about little things like having our pacing guides be more uniform. And so we've got another little side project where we're looking at pacing guides that we found on the internet from other schools, because sometimes when we have these task forces do all this work, when they come to present to us, there are different styles and methods, and we think that we can help our teachers if we just have more of a uniform approach to what those pacing guides look like. So there's a little bit of work going on with wrapping up writing. And our art department, they're kind of an amazing department. They do a lot of work on their own, and they have used just department, their regular department time or PD day time to continue to really work on their curriculum, and they are going to present to the board in February to share their work and all the work they've done in the art at the K-12 level. So lots of things happening. It's been a little tricky. We don't want to take a lot of time out of the classroom to have some of these task forces running just because of the sub-s shortage and just wanting our teachers in front of the students. So some of this work has been done after-school hours, and we really appreciate all the, our hard work of our staff.
Any questions for Linda?
Thank you, Linda.
Oh, no, we're not, we're doing my report just yet. Yeah, yeah, the next item under my report is, you know, Neola Bylaws and Policy Update. This is our fall update, and so once again, we will turn it back to Linda to do a first reading of our policies. So if you remember, we'll do a first reading this evening. We'll do a second reading at our December 13th board meeting, I believe it is, and then ask for your approval that evening. So if there are any questions between now and then, we'll have some opportunity to answer those for you.
Okay. Starting out, we have Policy 0100. It's just a definition change. It's a revised definition. This update reflects an updated law in relation to remote board meetings. On page 3/4, the only change is in regard to voting and the requirement to be present except due to any purpose permitted by the law, and this policy definition aligns with state law. 0167.3, Public Participation at Board Meetings. This is a revised policy. This policy updates expectations for public participation at board meetings. Like we do now, they register or sign in upon arrival, submit address, speak for three minutes, and speak one time. Any request to an individual to stop speaking and/or leave the meeting may be requested. Public participation overall may be limited to 20 minutes, but the timeframe may be extended at the board's pleasure. And I believe the opportunity for a live broadcast is not a part of the policy any longer. Policy 3120, Employment of Professional Staff. This is a revised policy. This policy has been simplified. We hire in accordance with the law and MDE certification requirements. This language eliminates some outdated statements, such as using the term "highly qualified." Policy 6144, Cost Principles and Federal Funds is a revised policy. This policy helps satisfy audit requirements in regard to direct and indirect costs of federal dollars. 6152, Student Fees, Fines, and Supplies. This is a revised policy that adds the option of credit card or online payment options, and it supports our current practices of not imposing fees or fines to students that qualify under the McKinney-Bento Act. 7450, Property Inventory is a revised policy. This policy clarifies that capital expenditures with a unit cost of $5,000 or more require prior written approval of the federal agency awarding it, and this policy meets a new MDE law. 8310, Public Records is a revised policy, and this policy adds a way to flag individuals who have a participation card, meaning that the Attorney General would not, gives us permission to not share student information. Policy 8320, Personnel Policy is a revised policy in regard to staff confidentiality. And that is in regard to placing their medical records in a separate file, using the term "their" in language versus him or her, and this also adds a records retention limit of seven years before files would be destroyed. And last but not least, 8330, Student Records is a revised policy, and the only change here is the deletion of the date after June 26, 2011. In the second paragraph, that is deleted. That's everything.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the policies this evening? If you do have come up with any questions, if you could please email myself and Linda those questions, we'll make sure to do the research and get that back to you prior to our next board meeting. And just one more thing before I wrap up my report this evening. I think everybody on the board knows this, but tonight is Deb Irvin's last school board meeting. Deb is retiring from the Mount Pleasant Public Schools as of November 30th, so we want to thank Deb for all of her work, everything that happens at the board meeting. The whole reason why we look professional and organized is because of everything she does. So she will be greatly missed, but we wish her well on her new adventures with her grandchildren and having lots of fun without us. So thank you, Deb, for all you do. And that concludes my report for this evening.
And thank you, yes, to Deb as well for all that she does.
All right. Next is the Requested Financial Reports.
Good evening. I have for you the financial reports for general fund and special service funds, revenue and expenditure comparison of budget to actual for the month ending October 2020 and October 2021. For general fund, revenues are at 11% of budget this year compared to 13% last year. Expenditures are at 21% of budget this year compared to 19% last year. For special service funds, athletics, revenue is at 300% of budget this year compared to zero last year, and expenditures are at 0% of budget both years. This is an increase?
I'm sorry, I really can't hear anything that you're saying.
This is an increase? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Adding the pom-pom team to athletics, so we need to adjust the budget when we do our next budget revision next month. The Children's Learning Center, revenue is at 42% of budget this year compared to 31% last year, and expenditures are at 31% of budget compared to 20% last year. For the nurse testing program, there's been no income or expenditures both years for the month of October. Food service program, revenue is at 6% this year compared to 9% last year, and expenditures are at 16% this year compared to 19% last year. And for the school store, revenue is at 36% of budget compared to 26% last year, and expenditures are at 22% of budget compared to 23% last year. For the Treasurers Report, the beginning cash balance on September 30th for general fund was $7.3 million. We had income in the amount of $2.2 million in the month of October and disbursements of $3.9 million. That brings us a balance on October 31st of $5.5 million. For the Debt Retirement Fund, on September 30th, we had a cash balance of $111,000, small amount of income of $8.89 in the month of October, and no disbursements. That brings us a balance of $111,000. And for the Capital Projects Fund, beginning balance of September 30th was $2.5 million, small amount of interest income again, $33, and no disbursements for October. So that brings us a balance on October 31st of $2.5 million. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, the board has received correspondence over the last month from Andrea McKinney. Next is the Citizens Request to Address the Board on Any Agenda or Non-Agenda Items. And like usual, I'll be calling first come, first served based on the sign-in sheet. So with that being said, we'll start with Brianna Mogenberg.
I'm really sorry, I fell asleep. It's like walking on needles. Hi there, Brianna Mogenberg. I have a new address. I want to let everybody know that I now am actually and officially a resident of Mount Pleasant Public Schools. Also, the last three weeks of my life have been horrible. I have been moving. I'm a single mom. I have had to get everybody and anybody that I can to help me move. And if you remember, I moved because of things that had happened here. And I see the numbers that were up there, and it actually looks like enrollment's down a little bit. And if I figure it was about 82 students, that looks like about $750,000. I don't know if you're all ready or not, but enough is enough. This has gone on so long. The recall effort is still moving forward. We are really going at it hard, and we're going to continue. And I see what's happened in this community, and you know, I just want you all to know that people can spit me up and chew me out, and that's okay. I'm going to come back, and I'm going to keep going. But that's what's happening in our community. And if you go all the way back to last winter, I had asked every single one of you, and you all spoke about it at your board meeting, let's discuss, let's be proactive, let's talk about hearing what parents think, what they have to say. And it really seems to continue that the board does a lot of what they want to do because that's what they want to do. And I refer back to my daughter being moved from this district because of things that had happened, especially in her English Language Arts class, but a lot of because of the way that adults treat me. That's not something that I would allow to happen to my child. We can do something about this. This recall effort across the state of Michigan is kind of like the first horse out of the gate. And across the state, there are several other recalls that are taking place. We are an example that everybody's looking at right now in the state. We can also be an example to find resolution to this. You know, when I moved, Eric Barron with the Maureen Sun, right? You guys all know Eric because everybody talks about him. People throw Eric under the bus because he's my friend, but guess what? He's a liberal. I'm very conservative. And yet, we're really, really, really good friends, and we can do that because we respect each other. And he can do him, and I can do me, and that works. And that can happen, and I think that if we can find a time to sit down and find resolution to this, I think that, go back to, like I said, back in the winter, this could have started from the beginning. But it's now time. I know people that sit up here are friends with people that say really horrific things about me that I couldn't even repeat publicly because it's that obscene. There are husbands of people that sit up here that also say things. And I think it's unacceptable. It's not an example for our children, and I think we need to do better than this. I think you're all great people. I don't agree with you pushing your decisions on everybody the way they've been pushed. And so tonight, I'm going to follow up. I spoke to Jennifer about it earlier today, and I'm going to follow up with an email because I would like to find a time where we can all sit down. And if that means to invite the news, I think that we can do that. Because again, like I said, we can find resolution, and I think as a community, it's a great opportunity for us across the state of Michigan to show all of these other school districts that are now having recalls take place. Resolution can happen. You know, I go back to the simple phrase, like when life gives you lemons, make lemonade. And so I'm imploring you right now to consider making lemonade with me. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Chama Beardsley. Live in Mount Pleasant with three children. Thank you to the Mount Pleasant Public School Board for following peer-reviewed research to create a framework of safety for our students, faculty, and staff, and in turn, our entire community. With the high infection rate in our community and the incredible burden on our local hospital, this mandate, based on science, is an important factor for a base level of public safety. I encourage the school board to continue promoting, facilitating, and analyzing, continuing to really analyze, processes that establish teaching practices grounded in equity, diversity, access, and inclusion. To be clear, I am not talking about critical race theory, which is not taught in Mount Pleasant. I am referencing education based in reality that gives students an honest look at our nation's nation's history and the systemic racism on which it was founded. That is how real change will be made. In conclusion, I would like to acknowledge my full support for the entire school board, each one of you, for your volunteer labor, for all that you are doing. Especially right now, I would like to acknowledge Dr. Willian Pangle, Courtney Stegman, and Amy Bond. I appreciate all of you, but I especially appreciate these three board members who despite this recall effort are continuing to do the work that our community needs. You have many supporters in this community that recognize this important work that you are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Maureen Ake.
Good evening, good evening. I'm Maureen Ake and I'm a professor at Central Michigan University and a resident of Mount Pleasant. I want to indicate my continued support for board members Bond, Pangle, and Stegman. I also want to thank the school board in general for its willingness to listen to us, its commitment to providing a safe environment for the students, and for granting me the opportunity to speak again today. In the past few months, some people have verbally assaulted the school board members, stopped some of them, protested sex education in our schools, and spouted homophobic claims and all sorts of mangled ideas about critical race theory, even though the schools don't offer critical race theory. What these people don't want, however, is any discussion or teaching of racism and diversity, inclusion in the school curriculum. They want to deny the stories and historical experiences of people who do not look like them. I am not here to tell anyone how to raise their student or their, or all students, but I also want to indicate that I hope our schools, that I want to remind people that our schools provide students safe space for learning about the history and experiences of the people who make up the communities in which they live. When we read the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement at the beginning of each board meeting, it is because we recognize the contributions of Indigenous communities to this nation. We also recognize our relationship with these communities. Imagine the implications of not acknowledging them. In the past, we have not done that. Protesters complain that their students feel guilt. Of course, guilt is a natural feeling that some students may experience due to the knowledge they have gained from these courses. It does not mean that the students themselves are at fault or that their parents are at fault, but the feeling of guilt stems from an awareness that something wrong has happened to other people. Guilt, after all, is part of our ethical and moral good. It helps us develop empathy and compassion and consequently, a desire to change things for the better and to grow. I've heard somebody here say, "We need to change." I hope we do that, and I hope that person takes up that particular request that she has made this evening. I hope our school board will continue to provide space for our students to learn and understand their history, the good, the bad, the beautiful, and the ugly, all of it. We need to hear these stories, we must continue to listen to these stories because these stories are about our humanity, because they help us to avoid repeating the mistakes of our past, because they are important, because they make us whole. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Next is Chris Batzner.
Hello, everyone. I am frequently at these meetings, but I don't ever speak, I'm usually a letter writer, but I thought I would take this opportunity tonight and just share my gratitude. I am a parent with two children in the district, I am a small business owner, I have come from a long line of public servants as well as educators, and so I understand a little bit about the service that each one of you does and offers to our community and to our children and to our teachers and our staff and everybody, whether we have active students in the district or not. In my business, November is often a month of gratitude, and so I want to share a little bit of that gratitude with each of you tonight. I have watched you all stand strong and communicate with each other, listen actively, and respect different opinions, even when you have been challenged, even when they are different from your own. And I want you to know that you are seen not just by myself, but by others in the community, and that is super important and much appreciated from many of us, and I want you to share my gratitude with the work you do, the thankless work that you often do, and the fact that, we all know you can't make everyone happy all the time, and that you listen to each other, you have effective conversation, and you have outcomes that affect everybody in the district that are the best decision for everyone. And so that's really all I want to say, is just thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your work, thank you for your service, thank you for your understanding of each other and of the work that you've done and of the work up ahead. So, thank you.
Next, we come to the consent items. This is the items on the agenda where the board takes action. First off, I would like to ask for an approval of the minutes from the November fourth, twenty-twenty-one special meeting, as well as the November fourth, twenty-twenty-one special meeting minutes for the close session, and the financial approval of the bills in the form of one million nine hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And that passes. Next is new business, starting with retirement.
Sorry, I was on the wrong page. We'd like to honor Mr. Ray Wilton and his retirement. Ray has done a lot of work for us over the years at Community Ed and at the Isabella County Correctional Facility, and he will be retiring on December thirty-first.
Is there a motion to approve the retirement of Ray Wilton? So moved. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, was there a second? Yeah, sorry, a second. All right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And with regret, we pass the retirement of Ray Lowden. Next is resignations.
Yes, we would like the board to accept the resignation of Scott McNeil and Doug Wright.
Is there a motion to pass the resignation of Scott McNeil and Doug Wright?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And that passes as well, and we wish them the best of luck to the next things that they do. Next is new hires.
Yes, we'd like to welcome Celeste Mills, joining Poland Elementary First Grade, she'll be starting right after Thanksgiving, and Josephine Sapansky, teaching high school English. Josephine student taught for us a couple of years ago, and she's coming back to the community. And also Emily Schwimmer, Emily is currently student teaching, she is going to join us as a high school English teacher and also continue her English as a second language student teaching kind of during that time as well, so. Three new hires.
Thank you. Is there a motion to pass Celeste Mills, Josephine Sapansky, and Emily Schwimmer?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And welcome to the district, thank you very much. Next is donations. In your board record this evening, you have a donation of a Riften Activity Chair. The chair was donated by Tim and Nancy Hartshorn, and it'll be used by students in the Mount Pleasant Public Schools that have mobility difficulties. The chair is valued at one thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars, and we're asking that you accept the donation this evening. Is there a motion to accept the donation?
I move that we accept the donation of the Riften Activity Chair.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And that passes, thank you very much, what a generous gift. And next is the bond resolution.
Actually, we have a new activity.
Oh, new activity, I'm sorry.
Do you want to do that?
Sure.
New activity.
Yeah, Fancher Elementary is requesting a new activity account to be created so they can keep track of all of the grants that the building is getting, any teachers in the building, they can keep track of what's coming in and know that it has to be spent on a specific purpose, so this will help them better monitor their grant spending and make sure that they're following all the guidelines that come with the grants.
May I ask a question? Do all of our buildings have this type of setup, or does this, and should we have this type of setup in all of our buildings?
It's becoming more and more popular for sure, I highly recommend it because if, especially our elementaries typically have one, maybe two activity accounts, and everything is lumped into their PTO money, maybe, well, I shouldn't say PTO money, but donations, popcorn money sometimes, just anything coming in, and it, grants could easily get lost in the mess. So, we do have a few buildings moving that way, we also have some in central office moving that way, and as the request comes up, or periodically, I just kind of urge them to look into it and set up a separate grant account because it is a lot easier to track the funding that way.
So it shouldn't be necessarily a policy that we set that all the buildings follow this format, we're letting the buildings make the determination of whether they want to or not?
Yeah, I think a lot of it depends on how maybe good their record-keeping is, or prior people's record-keeping are, and how, you know, detailed, how many grants they get in, some buildings maybe don't get a lot of grants in, and it's not as hard to keep track of, but.
I think we should look at making it standard through all the buildings.
Sure.
Once the infrastructure's there and the models are, I think it's a good thing to have.
Yeah, I agree.
Across the board, I think it's a nice model, and I'm glad Fancher's doing this, but I think the whole district probably should have some kind of structure.
Okay.
To be able to do the same thing.
Sure.
Not to not move this forward, but just to say.
No, I fell the same way, and if we have it for one building, I think it makes sense to keep it continuous across all buildings.
With that being said, for now, is there a motion to move Fancher's through, knowing that we would like to extend that to all of the buildings in the future?
Yeah, I'll move to approve this best part before us right now.
Seconded. Wait, I didn't get that, I'm sorry.
I move to approve that what Fancher brought to us tonight, just that right now.
Oh, just this, so we're not moving to do it for all the schools?
They're gonna work toward getting something.
We can prepare the paperwork and for our next board meeting, and we'll let you know there may be some other buildings that already have this kind of account, so we'll fill in blanks.
Thank you.
So I assist for this, Fancher for aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And that passes, so that will be a great way to move forward. Next is the bond resolution, and this is a roll call vote, and Ginger, I believe that you were going to explain it?
Yes, yeah, you have a twenty-page document in your board report that I will spare you reading every, every word of, but this is a bond resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, since, thank you to our community, that did pass, very exciting for us. This was created in partnership with our legal counsel, Trune Law Firm, and with our financial advisors from PFM. And it details the issue and the sale of the bonds and the stipulations. It lists Stiefel Nicholas as our underwriter for the bond, this is another company that we have a long-time relationship with that we really trust and support us well. It, some of the details is that it lists the first series has a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-four million dollars. This will ensure that the taxes we need to levy to pay the first principal and interest payments still does not go above what we've previously levied on our taxpayers. Does, it lists that there's a separate bank account that has to be kept for the incoming taxes for this particular bond, and then just kind of all the details, how Stiefel is allowed to sell, how and when they're allowed to sell the bonds on behalf of the district.
Is there a motion to approve the bond resolution, and this is also a roll call vote, but we'd need to, there needs to be a motion first.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented regarding the bond sale.
I second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Can we have a discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to let the board members know that we met with Stiefel at the conference, at the Michigan Association of School Board Conference, and our construction company, who's doing some of the work, architectural firms, they were all very, very impressed and very, very excited. We were one of the best in the entire state for having our bonds passed, they were very excited by that, they were also very excited that not all of them did pass, there were a fair amount that did not go through. And so, we need to really thank our community for supporting us and stepping us, because across the state right now, things are iffy in school districts, but they were very impressed with the turnout that we had, the vote that we got, the support that we got, and for the amount and the structure, they really liked the structure that we're moving forward with the financing, how we're going in stages, and so they were all very excited and looking forward to working with us.
Thanks, Deb.
Sheila Murphy?
Yep.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Willian Pangle?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Amy Bond? Yes. And that passes, and yes, we are very, very appreciative to the community. Next is the Board of Education discussion. With that, I would just like to say that Tim and I did attend the school board annual leadership conference this past weekend, there were a lot of really great sessions. One of the highlights that I attended was the esports, and a lot of talk about forming esports over the state of Michigan right now. We got to kind of meet with all of our representatives that we work with and talk to them a little bit, and they were really excited to see us and did have a lot of very positive things to say. We spoke with a lot of other school districts in the state of Michigan, they also are having a lot of problems with busing, and so we kind of talked a lot about some of those challenges and bus drivers in the state of Michigan, knowing that that is a issue across the country really right now as well, and that was talked about. And so we did talk to other districts about kind of some of the things that they were doing to try to alleviate some of those pressures as well. Tim, did you have anything you'd like to add about some of the sessions and things you went to?
Sure, I kind of did a personal theme where I looked at a lot of the diversity, equity, and inclusion programming. There were several school districts that are in various phases, I'll say, of going through this process, and had different types of models on how they bring the community in and how they go about this kind of a conversation, especially in our current climate. There were some great models and there's people doing some great work. Ferndale Public Schools is doing a wonderful job in this space right now, and so I have gathered some information that I'm gonna share with everyone and kind of the models that they're doing, because I think it's a good idea for us to create a task force with a charge from the board, with our community to get together and start talking about this. They all have very similar basic structures, so it's kind of a charge and then gathering information and data, and then common language, and then talking about the different components, and then coming up with a high-level board resolution and what those can look like, so they gave some models, so you can have an idea of what the structure is good to look at like. So I actually attended three different sessions that were talking about different components of all of that space and how to go about that. A couple of the other things I wanted to mention, we had some, they had four very, very good keynote speakers that were, it was actually really very well done. The ones in the middle were very interesting, and the one was on community engagement and student success, and how, ways of going about engaging the community for academic success in the classroom, and it was very interesting in some of the ways that they were going about that work. One was not to use data, but not do data, talk about the story behind the data, it's about the It's about the story, then use the data as a support because families can get behind a story. Which, they were all very kind of motivating, inspirational as ideas. Because another theme that was happening a lot there, as we all know, there's been a lot of stress on school boards in the state of Michigan. When we all get together, it kind of crystallized that. But we actually had an attack on a board member in the hotel at the very beginning. That kind of jarred everyone quite a bit. And so they had to bring in extra security. But I think that kind of unsettled people. So it was actually quite an emotional conference, which was kind of interesting. But they were very supportive in what they were trying to do and trying to help us do different things. And the last speaker was a, I'm going to try to get his title because I, he is Colonel Arthur Athens. And Colonel Arthur Athens is retired from the military, but with many years of experience. But he was the executive director of leadership at Annapolis. So his main function was for all branches, was to teach leadership skills to the military. He was a very interesting, very charismatic man and had very interesting ways. And so he came to talk about us as board members and leadership during times of challenge and to give skills and ways for board members to think about moving forward during times of challenge. It was a little uncomfortable, but he was drawing correlations to those in prison and war camps, believe it or not. But they were saying, if you look at the basic things that they had to go through for leadership in basic environments, so you have no control over time. You have no control over message. You don't have a lot of controls, but yet you have to step in a leadership role. It's kind of how he was paralleling them. And it was very interesting how, you know, he was trying to encourage people just to keep moving forward and had little monikers to help you understand that movement in your challenging times and to encourage just to go through that and how to fill your bucket. So that was another big conversation that a lot of groups were happening. Because many schools, the teachers are tired, the administrators are tired. And how do you refill people's buckets, right? How do you go about and do that to reactivate them, to keep them engaged and not burn them out? So there was a lot of conversation at tables and then themes throughout the sessions about, you know, ideas to try to figure out how to do that. I mean, we're feeling it in our own district where staff and students and everyone's kind of getting burned out. You know, and trying to figure out how do you support them so you can kind of refill them or give them a moment so they have their way to refill. And so that's some other ideas that Amy and I had talked about was, you know, looking at ways and listening to what everyone else is trying to do or thinking about doing to see how we can implement those into our district for our staffs. So it was a very interesting conference. It was a hybrid conference, which is very strange. So three of the sessions that I attend were actually virtual. And so I went back to my hotel room and sat there and attended a meeting, which is kind of strange because this conference, you learn a lot by sitting with other people and sharing ideas. And they tried the best they could to do that. It was very COVID-conscious. We had to check in. And every time we went into a room or sat at a table, you had to register so they could track. There were about, I'd say, 400, 400, 500 people at the conference. And a good chunk were online. So it was a little different of a style, but it kind of worked in some aspects. So it was very informative. It was very tiring. Actually, I think it's one of the most tiring ones that I've been to in a long time. But I think a lot of it was because a lot of the topics were kind of intense and kind of on topic at the moment. And I think a lot of the board members don't have a lot of people that they can kind of share their, what's going on in their districts. Kind of that mental health end of it was kind of interesting. So it was a good conference. But I'm still tired. And Amy and I had lots of great conversations. So we solved the problems of the world, at least in our little world at that one table.
Tim, do you know if any of these meetings were recorded that we can look at, especially the ones at leadership or refilling buckets kind of thing? We've been talking about this here.
I was looking at that today. So they have a very sophisticated app that you can use to go to this conference. And I do know that the virtual ones were recorded, and they're available. The ones that were face-to-face were not. But I think some of the handouts, let's say, are available.
They did, yes.